This time, I'll call the Budget Committee Work Session to order and ask for a roll call, please.
Cole.
Here.
Hanum.
Here.
Lewis.
Here.
Mitchell.
Here.
Moon.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Now, I ask for an emergency announcement, please.
Before we get started, let me read the emergency evacuation procedures. In the event of an emergency evacuation, an alarm will sound. Everyone should exit the building by way of the nearest stairwell in a safe and effective manner. If the nearest stairwell is blocked by smoke, use the other stairwell. Do not use the elevator. Once you've reached the main floor, follow the exit signs to exit the building and quickly proceed away from the building. Please be mindful of others evacuating and of emergency vehicles.
Okay, at this time, I'll ask for any input on items on the agenda, please.
Quick facts for Blunt County, and some of you got a copy of the second page, which is the definition of the Blunt Countyan and the average income. And my question is simply, when you look at that average income as being less than $24,000 a year, how can you justify asking the Blunt County worker to pay $26,000 and $27,000 a year for a starting salary for a Blunt County employee who on top of that gets another, what, 30 or 40 percent of the county's tax dollars to pay for their health insurance? Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Is there anyone else that would like to have input on items on the agenda? Seen none, we'll move on to discussion of the 2015-16 budget. First, I'd like to ask if property assessor would like to come up and give us an update on the certified tax rate. Tim?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My staff has worked a process of the 2015 reappraisal that started about 15 months ago, and we have completed that process now 30 days ahead of schedule. And our notice is planned to go out Friday and Monday for the reappraisal. Thursday, our State Board of Equalization will meet, and they'll certify our reappraisal numbers. And all of our ratios are within parameters for the state. So essentially, it will be certified and numbers released. I have asked Connie Sands with the State Board, who calculates all certified rates for every county, to give us a preliminary number on what our certified rate for this year will look like. And she's given the number of 2.1177. And again, that is preliminary. The actual number will not be calculated until next month, and that'll be after our informal appeals. But right now, as it stands, 2.1177, and that number does not appear to change. All the data is in the books, and nothing should change between now and then.
See, want to have any questions or any discussion? Yes?
Mr. Chairman, I asked the property assessor, can you give us kind of a profile? Did residential grow? Did commercial grow? Did one grow significantly or one decrease?
I can...
Kind of a makeup of the number?
Sure, I can. I can't disclose actual numbers because it's not been certified. I can say that 76 percent of the properties in Blunt County either stayed the same or came down.
76 percent.
Okay. I can also say that there was a big, there was a large growth in commercial. We have found that our commercial base cost has went up tremendously, and values in the commercial segment classification has grown tremendously since 2010.
Is there any other questions or discussion?
Thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
Go ahead. Tim, I think it's worth mentioning two things that we need to be focused on, at least two things. One, you've already stated that the results right now are preliminary.
Correct.
And then, second, we're not allowed under statute to round, so we're going to have to set a certified tax rate of 2.1177 if the state certifies that number.
If it stays 2.1177, we cannot round.
So anything over 2.1177, we will have to adopt a property tax resolution for whatever amount different from that that this body proceeds with?
That's correct.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, in previous years, each year, we have a certified rate. Certified rate stays the same until the reappraisal cycle is finished, either four years or five years. So in reality, we've proposed each year a rate in excess of certified. That's a question, Mr. Chairman.
Randy, will you answer that, please?
The prevailing, I don't know if the terminology certified is applicable at any time other than a reappraisal process. Otherwise, the elected body, whatever they adopt, is the prevailing property tax rate in effect. So I think certified tax rate really only applies to the reappraisal property year, if I'm not mistaken.
That's correct.
Any other discussion or questions? Thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
Moving on now to the discussion of the 15-16 budget. Randy?
I know it's small, but what I wanted to do is just kind of walk through kind of a summary of where my assessment is based on the presentations that have been made to you, then my individual comments and conversations that I've had with you to facilitate whatever our next steps are. I mean, hopefully, given the sizable amount of data and presentations that you've heard and received, hopefully, you would be in a position, after I get through with this, to kind of give some direction. Since you're not voting on anything tonight, if you could give me some direction on what you would like to see and some type of a recommendation that could be brought to you at a later meeting, so we'd have a starting point for how we get to a recommendation that goes to the full commission. So we'll start with the General County Fund. These are the revenues by individual account. I apologize that we didn't get this on the screen. It would be a little easier for you. We had to resort to the archaic means of paper. For the current year, we're projecting expense revenues of about $41.5 million in the current year. And on the far right-hand side, you'll see notes in there, and you'll see that for the next year, 15-16 budget, we're only forecasting about $40.7 million in revenue. And to fund what's been presented to you, we would need around $47.5 million or about $6.8 million. Now, if we can focus on that page just for a moment, there are two things that I think there's some opportunities to reduce that needed to balance amount. And there's been much discussion in the last few weeks, and there's been a lot of discussion since I've been here. There are two accounts at 479900, other direct federal revenue. We're projecting this year about $2 million and about $1,001,000 next year. Then there's a corresponding account on the preceding page called Contracted Prisoner Board, another $2 million that we're projecting this year, and about $1,003,000 next year. That's the largest variance we have on there, and everyone needs to understand prisoners don't pay the full burden of the cost to incarcerate them. The funding we receive in these two accounts merely reduce the county's cost of incarceration. Now, I've had countless people tell me that we make money and make money and make money. We don't make money. We recover funding to reduce our costs, and it's been very helpful. Now, given the discussion that's taken place, and I don't want to put any words in anybody's mouth, but right now, if we have certain events that were to take place, then we wouldn't recognize as much revenue as what we're getting right now. I don't want to speak for anybody, but I think that's a fair statement. So right now, I think we have some opportunity, given our census and the reimbursements that we're receiving so far, I think we have an opportunity to actually see increased revenues for this year. And I'll show you later on what I'm talking about there. But right now, we are projecting less money for prisoner reimbursement for next year.
And that would be, what's the reasoning behind that? That we would expect less next year?
Well, if you had lawyers walk in representing certain things, it could significantly change the financial model. And we don't need to do any advertising for the local bar.
Randy, what was the other line item you said?
That works out to approximately eight pennies on the tax rate.
Well, the difference in those two numbers, and actually going to be, I think we will, you know, two years ago, we had, when we cleaned up some things, we got more reimbursement than what we anticipated. And we've got that caught up now, and I think, based on what's happening right now on the reimbursement side, we probably can get a little more money this year than what we're projecting in this snapshot.
Randy, can you then speak to 475900 and 479900? And does the same logic apply?
Those would be grants, and we're just showing where we received the grant proceeds on those particular items. I think the ones you were mentioning are emergency management grants.
What did actually says is other federal through state?
But that's for emergency management. And then, the other thing that it is natural to want to compare, and all I will caution you on is comparisons need to be, don't always need to be taken literally. And we have what I consider a very inelastic revenue base in the general fund. We are very dependent on two sources of money. The fees that the office holders collect is a result of their responsibilities, and then the largest source of funding we have is from the county property tax. A number of communities collect sales taxes that benefit their general county, and a number of communities collect wheel taxes. And I know nobody likes to talk about those things, but if you're going to compare, be careful of what you're comparing to. But by and large, we have a very inelastic, very heavily dependent on fees and property tax to run our general county. Other questions on revenues? Last statement I would make on the revenues on that last page, you can see that we appropriated on the left-hand column $4.2 million in fund balance. In our original budget, when we received it here a year ago, commission adopted a budget that used over $3 million of fund balance just to balance the budget. I think I've been pretty transparent and clear. We can't do that forever. We've done that for two years. That two years is up this year. The risk we run is we'll lose a credit, we'll have a downgrade in our credit rating if we get below a 16 percent number on reserves.
So Randy, just to be clear, the revenue being down with expenses up, so we're at 6.82, 3 million deficit, which equates to about 22 cents.
If you're dividing that 6.8 million by 317,500, then that's the risk.
Probably closer to 21. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on the revenue? And this is the summary of the general fund expenses by department. You'll see some shaded areas. I took the liberty of going through and identifying some things that came up during the various presentations that you heard, and also with discussion I've had with you individually, I've shaded some areas that, at the bottom, sum up to about $356,355, that I just identify them as highlighted requests. And those would include the case managers that were discussed for the drug court. Again, the concept there was to do something that would help reduce our census in the jail. There were some, there's an increase that I think merits consideration on parks and recreation, because the county, when it went into its cost-reduction mode some few years back, the county did not provide its portion of funding that it is contractually obligated, in my opinion, with its interlocal agreement between Maryville, Alcoa, and Blunt County. The commitments that were made in recruiting industry to the Industrial Development Board of $214,000. The contributions to agencies, again, when the county was in a cost-cutting mode, we reduced the Heritage Center for its maintenance requirements that the county has as a part of our agreement with the state of Tennessee. We cut them from 50 to some $39,000, and they've requested that we restore them back to 50. And then, because of the number of public hearings and meetings that we're having related to our advertising requirements for public notice, we need to increase the funding for the Beer Board. That is not to say that none of the other requests that you heard are not meritorious. I merely identified these things as recurring themes in my conversations that there seemed to be some support for. Again, on the layout of this information, in the middle of the page, you'll see in the 1, 2, 3, fourth column, requested with Evergreen. That means that the budget proposal that is included in the numbers that are presented here, $47,593,000, that includes the cost of Evergreen, if funded, for those respective departments that are impacted by Evergreen. And then, the difference, if you ask me, how much does that mean for a various department? The difference is in the next column identified as Evergreen difference. And as of this moment, that's $1.9 million, and that's based on the latest response we've received back from Evergreen, based on the appeals that different departments and office holders have made that we have had confirmed back from Evergreen.
Questions?
Mr. Vineyard, this has been, Evergreen's been before the Human Resources Committee. Do we have a, what was their recommendation? Or was there a recommendation coming out of Human Resource?
I believe they've approved a resolution to be forwarded to the full commission. This is the cost associated with that. The way our committees are structured, they have the responsibility, as I understand it, for the Human Resource side of it, this body's responsibility is for the funding of it.
Yeah, so the recommendation that came out of HR was for the technical side to implement the program. The financial side was left for the Budget Committee's consideration.
I believe I'm correct. This would not give any raise to anyone in a pay grade higher than 112, which equates to something around 50 or 51,000, something like that. Jenny, hear anybody here? I think I'm right in that regard. And everyone does not get something as a result of the recommendations from Evergreen. And I think it's pretty evident, from looking at this page, the majority of the need rests with the largest department in the county, which is the Sheriff's Department.
Randy, my other understanding is that this, these recommendations would get us only into the 60th percentile of those who were surveyed.
That is correct.
Thank you.
And that's based on survey results from some 17 employers that responded to their Any other questions on General County on this summary page?
Mr. Vineyard, you have the shaded highlighted areas that add up to $356,000. If there's other items that this committee would like to look at, when would be the appropriate time to bring up General County? And I take it, at the end of today, you'll go back and do a pro forma based upon what you hear from the committee?
Yes, that would be what I would hope to do. I mean, that's kind of what I'm giving you now, and I took the liberty of shading those areas that I sensed there was general support for among this body. And the reason I didn't take any other liberties is I didn't have that same sense of support for everything else that's listed on here.
So you'd like to go on through the presentation, and can we come back and look at 101 and...
Be happy to come back and revisit any of this.
151, 141 is after we have the summary, and we'll go back and look at anything we might want to add or take away.
This is probably what you're, one example of what you're referring to. We've listed the, summarized the requests here, or itemized them in this case. You can see that the budget this year, as amended, is about $7.5 million, and that is, the increase there is primarily because of the commission's adopting the recommendation of the Highway Superintendent, which is to take advantage of some grant opportunities to replace some bridges that the state offered. And that reflects the increased cost from the Highway Fund for those grant matches for the bridge replacement. So the budget next year is projected by the superintendent as being 6.1, or almost $6.2 million.
We have a breakdown of revenues. A lot of times, people think property tax goes into 131, the Highway Department. No property tax whatsoever goes to fund highway maintenance or payroll.
That's correct. Out of their $6.2 million in revenue that they're estimating for next year, $5 million of that comes from local option sales tax, and the state provides gasoline and motor fuel tax money. And that's a revenue stream that is fairly flat. The more fuel-efficient that cars become, the less tax you're going to see, because the tax is on a per-gallon basis at the pump. And I would imagine that conversation tried to get started this year in the legislature. I assume it will be significant next year, because the condition of roads that we all drive on every day, like the interstate and some other areas, the potholes, winters we've had the last few years have taken quite a toll. And that's a pretty significant issue for the state legislature right now. Any other questions on the Highway Department? Tom?
I asked the same question during the budget hearings we had last month, but I don't think Mr. Dunlap's here, but my understanding is we're repaving, the average road life's about 15 years. We are repaving about 13 or 17 miles of road a year, and really, we need to be doing 38 to 40 miles a year. Otherwise, eventually, we're going to have a big problem in the county infrastructure wise. But I thought that was interesting, and I wanted to bring it up today.
Is there anybody here from the Highway Department that wants to add anything to that?
I'm here, Dr. Dunlap.
Okay. Is that a fair statement, Julie? Okay.
Where are we on maintenance of effort? You gave us, it's a five-year calculation, and last year, we came, we just met it, if my memory serves me correctly. So where do we think we'll be with this projected number?
I think preliminarily, we're okay. But that's something we'll monitor, and I'll touch on that a little bit more, because the Highway Department is not the only entity in county government that has that test that we have to meet. Any other questions on the Highway budget? General Purpose School Fund, revenues are on the left-hand side of the page. These are the, this is the recommendation from the school board. They are presenting a budget that totals $84,700,000 as a request for next year. You can see there are three largest sources of revenue, rather transparent. You'll notice that the current property tax estimate for next year shows a decrease, and that's because what is embedded in this request is a shift of seven cents from the education line to an education capital line in the property tax resolution. That's 401,100, first line on this page. Second item that I would bring to your attention is 402,100, local option sales tax. You'll see a significant increase in sales tax estimates for next year, and that's because this will be the first full year that we'll get to recognize the increase in the sales And then, the third item is basic education, which is BEP. That's 465110. And that's based on the first estimate they've received, that the school board received and acted on. And as those of you who have been on this body before, you know that that number will change a time or two before we, you make a... change a time or two before we, you make a final recommendation. So that's the revenue side. On the expense side, the school board has adopted a budget of 86.4 million dollars. And the simple arithmetic is, that's not balanced. So you'll see the line that runs diagonally between the 84,000, 84,700,000 in revenue to the 86,404,000 expense budget, and that's 1.704 million difference, and that's a request for new money, or additional funding. Is Troy here? Oh, okay. Have I misrepresented anything, Troy?
No, sir. We do have that, 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 that estimate on BEP.
Do you mind coming up?
As, as Mr. Vinyard pointed out, BEP estimates will change a time or two. We just received our April estimate, it was not good. It's about a half a million dollars less than what we had previously budgeted, but that's not been taken to the school board yet.
We appreciate the numbers working in the other direction.
Yeah, I know.
And usually, the April numbers, the most often, well, I shouldn't say that. We've seen it change, go both ways. I was about to say, usually April's pretty much nails it.
It usually does, although we're double checking some numbers, and the state, the state actually sent a, an April estimate a week, a week ago earlier that was significantly in error statewide, and so they resubmitted it. And so because, we're double checking the numbers, make sure they got it right.
What's the reason for that? Why, what's the difference in, why is it, why is it going to happen?
We were instabil, we are in stability in the current year, which means our funding due to ADMs decreasing over the past several years is, went way down this year. But for one year, the state maintains us at the same level as the prior year. So we're receiving funding this year, same as last year, but the actual calculations was a little over a million dollars what we actually would have earned. So we're starting this, for next year, there's, we're starting at a lower number to begin with. Not to mention, there were two other factors, that our fiscal capacity went up, which reduces the state funding. And we have our earned positions for special ed teachers drop significantly more than I thought we would, so we're double checking those numbers. But those two factors cost us half a million dollars alone.
Troy, how much did the ADM go down?
Pardon me?
How much did the ADM go down?
ADM actually went up by about 35 students.
And just for all of our sex, ADM stands for what?
Average daily membership.
Okay. You want to address while you're there, the request of the board to shift seven cents?
I think you, you put it pretty well. What they've suggested is a shift seven cents to an education capital project fund, which would allow you to appropriate those cents and not require split dollars with the two cities, which would allow about 2.3 million, I think, is what's in, in that budget for spending on capital projects for schools. If we, if, if, if you go the other way, and you try to spend the seven cents within the, the school tax rate, that only generates about a million three to a million four in taxes to be spent on capital. So we can spend 2.3 million on capital projects with the same tax rate, or spend 1.3, 1.4 million on capital.
Or the, I guess the other way to say it is, in order to spend 2.3, we'd have to, we'd have to appropriate three, about 3 million to get to 2.3 without doing it that way.
Yes, that's, that's another way to put it. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Troy, and the reason for that is the recent Court of Appeals decision. Can you give the reasoning behind that, or what, what the court decision was?
This came out of, the Tennessee Code, or the law that's on the books, allows County Commission, is our understanding, to do, to move, put seven cents in the capital fund. And if you're in a county that has split dollars, you don't have to split that. That came to light through a recent appeals, Court of Appeals decision out of McMinn County. And that, that case has gone through two, two courts, regular court and a court of appeals, and both found in favor of McMinn County. If I got the right county, McMinn County. And that's how they're, they're doing it that way, and they're operating it that way. Now, I will say, I think I was told that Athens City and/or Etowah City have filed an appeal to the State Supreme Court, but I don't know if they've decided to hear that case or not.
Troy, are we aware of any other counties across the state that, that are doing the same thing?
I'm not exactly, um, no, not exactly like that. Not to say that there's not. I've not found that yet.
We actually have asked for that information, and they haven't gotten it yet. Vasitas, if they're aware of anybody else that has similar, handles this in a similar way.
And are we familiar with any other court cases that are ongoing at this time with that same subject matter?
I'm not aware of many.
I'm not aware of any.
If I remember from my conversations, talking to my counterpart in McMinn County, they've been operating this way, I think, for some 11 or 12 years, is that right?
Yes.
Longer than that, maybe.
Yes.
And I have been told since I've been here that there are communities that actually do this, I mean, prior to the court case. So it is, it, it, it's the way the law reads. Period.
Okay, just curious, it'd be good to see who's doing this and who's not, what court cases may be pending out there. It'd be, just be good information to have.
Troy, how much was spent in your capital outlay fund last year?
Well, within the General Purpose School Fund, Fund 141, we have a, a cost center called Regular Capital Outlay, and including 720,000 for the recently approved roofing projects at Montvale Middle Settlements, including those, 879,000.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the school budget?
Troy, about three years ago, we talked about technology, and it was a pretty good size of number approved by the commission. And a lot of that work was going to be done that summer. I'm just looking at the increase this year, 786 to 1,404,000. And I, and I've seen the wireless access points.
Right.
In a, in a pretty good list, but yet, I think it was three years ago, we took a, took a hard look at it, and there were some assurances made that was going to put us pretty good standing.
We had, there, there's a, let's see. Yeah, we've got a budget of, requested, $800,000 in the technology line. A, a big piece of that is Wi-Fi access points, trying to get all the classrooms and all the, I won't say all the schools, I have to refer that to Dr. Dalton. Many of our classrooms, particularly at the high schools, middle schools, with Wi-Fi access points in every classroom. So we're working towards that. We're not there yet, and a lot of it, it's, it's building that infrastructure. A lot of it's behind the, the online testing that we're having to do. A lot of that's going on this week with TCAPS and all that kind of stuff, so, yes, it's a lot of money, but technology requires a lot of investment and continual investment
Other questions on the school board's recommendation? Okay. Move on to Debt Service Fund. The requested column is for 16 million dollars in revenue. The expenditures, principal interest is 17.8 million. And if you'll pay attention to the note on the side, refinancing and amortization. I want to talk about amortization first. Had the County Commission not approved a refinancing, and we were sitting here, you would be looking at a budget recommendation that's 645,000 higher than the previous year. The, the commission approved a refinancing, which took 20 million dollars worth of variable rate, synthetically fixed debt, and converted it to traditional fixed rate debt. And as a result of that transaction, it's increased our costs 1,100,000. Now, what we get out of that is, we're amortizing debt over the life of those bonds, which is 16 years, and previously to the refinancing, we were only amortizing the principal in 2030 and 2031. So we have accelerated the principal repayment, and that is reflected in that second column at the bottom of the page. You'll see that general government principal has gone up to next year of almost eight and a half million dollars, which is a more traditional picture of the way our debt amortization ought to look. You ought to be paying more off in principal than you are in interest. And then you'll see that the interest cost has gone up slightly for next year by about So we need to increase the amount of pennies that fund the Debt Service Fund to generate a million 767. And that's about six cents.
And Randy, this information hasn't changed since we made the decision to refinance. I believe this is about identical to what you told us at that time.
It should be very, very close to what you've seen all along, starting back last October when we made the presentation by PFM.
Thanks.
I think we've accomplished, I don't think anybody's desire was to pay more, but what we accomplished was, we've taken some risk off the table, we've moved closer to commission's adopted debt policy, which states they want as a goal, no more than 25% variable rate financing. This one transaction reduced our variable rate financing from 47.5%, I believe, to So the, of the remaining variable rate debt that the county has on its books, it's about 37.5% of our total debt portfolio. And then, the third goal that we achieved is we started amortizing the principal sooner rather than later.
And I think we all are in agreement, I hope, going forward, that we, any debt structure that we look at, that we would look to immediately start amortizing that debt, because otherwise, we end up where we are today, which is making a pretty painful decision, a $7 million decision, in fact, to be able to move that into permanent financing and amortize the debt, so.
That's correct. But we also have to put ourselves in a position to make additional capital investments for the county. Now, over 90% of our debt goes to education, and the county has needs in addition to education. You all have heard many of those, and we'll probably be revisiting some of those in a few minutes. But when you build the assets, you got to take care of them, and that's beyond just normal maintenance. That's roof replacements and things of that nature.
Yeah, and amortizing the debt at least gets us to the point where we can be in a debt reduction mode, so that when we need those things, we've got a, a method to go get them fixed.
Yes. Our, it, one of the notes in our credit rating is that our average length of debt is higher than what you would typically find. The average, the average life is around 18 years, I think, 17 point something years. Any other questions on Debt Service?
Still, we're 12.5% from being, to meet our debt policy. One-eighth of our outstanding debt needs to be converted to fixed and amortized over the life of that debt versus the way we sit today.
The, the county has not accomplished its, the county's not in total compliance with its policy as written right now.
That we're working towards.
We are moving in that direction. I'll be, we'll have another workshop sometime this summer, where we take a look at the $80 million piece of financing, because it's, we're going to have to make a decision on that. It matures December 16, I believe. So we'll have to start that process, summer of 16 at the latest. So just start the preparatory work a year ahead of time, so.
And this budget shortfall in the Debt Service Fund is, is indicated in the overall shortage that we talked, the six point, whatever, in the, in the beginning?
No, it has nothing to do with the general fund.
That's what I wanted to make sure, in addition to...
In addition to the 6.8 million shortfall in the general fund, there's a 1.7 million shortfall, 1.8 million in the Debt Service Fund. Both those pieces, the, the point is, the property tax rate funds both of those operations.
Just want to make sure we're building this as we go, so.
That's a fair point.
That it's on the same page. Thank you.
This one, I consider you don't have a choice, because you adopted a bond resolution, not this body, but the commission adopted a bond resolution that pledged the full faith and credit of the county to raise or have a, set a property tax rate that funds Debt Service. That's what enables us to go and attract... That's what enables us to go and attract very competitive prices on our bonds.
And the comptroller's gone into some counties across the state and compelled them to raise property taxes in order to service their debt properly, I believe. Is that a fair statement?
When we met with them, I believe in August, when we met with them, they told us they had forced two communities to raise property taxes for the first time in the history of the state.
And again, I just want to reiterate that when we talked about taking this debt and put it into a fixed rate with the penalty that was involved, we talked about this very scenario and what it was going to, what it was going to cost us.
Yes, and we ended up selling, as you pointed out, seven million dollars worth of taxable bonds to pay for that termination fee.
So we increased the debt, basically.
We increased the.
For the amount of the penalty.
Yes.
Thank you.
Other questions on debt service? Okay, let's take a look at fund balance. And this is, this is a format that should be fairly familiar to each of you. And we started using this because operating departments use one of their measurements of performance and they call it turnback. And all that means is the amount of the appropriation they don't spend. Well, that's all well and good, but some departments have revenue generating responsibilities as well. And my responsibility is to look at both pieces. So what we've chosen to do is try to keep this analysis in front of you and look at projecting where we think we'll end the year. So as of right now, if you'll note, we start out with fund balance as of six thirty fourteen. That is the audited fund balance from last fiscal year. So that becomes our beginning fund balance for the current operating year. We estimate the amount of revenues for the current year. And that's an increase. And then we estimate the amount of expenses for the current year, which is a decrease. And then we come up with a computation of what the fund balance would be, would look like if those materialize at June thirty, two thousand fifteen. Now, in an earlier part of our conversation, I told you I thought we had some revenue opportunity just on two items. There's always ups and downs in any of these accounts, as many as we've got. But there is the potential, and we've recognized it here, if the potential materializes and our reimbursement rates hold up on the jail, then I expect we'll be looking at something around forty-two point nine million dollars in revenue. And that differs from that first page of revenues that I showed you. That's my forecast, that's not anybody else's. And if that materializes, then we would expect fund balance decrease to less than seven and a half million dollars in the general fund. Or, as that bottom line indicates, we are projecting to use about three million fifty-eight thousand dollars worth of fund balance this year.
Randy, do you know the last time that we carried a fund balance that low?
Not off the top of my head.
Do you remember the title?
Thank you.
We'll get that for you.
Randy, you're using the, in the revenue stream, you're considering some money that potentially we can get from the jail. Is that like ninety percent or ninety-five percent or?
We're just, we're just looking at our reimbursements rates on average for those two accounts, and we've got roughly four more months of collections.
Seven point four two eight million. Total fund balance.
Yes.
Restricted, unrestricted, designated, undesigned.
All of that is not eligible for appropriation for emergencies.
Would you hazard an estimate of what the true unrestricted fund balance would be?
I don't want to hazard it right now. I'll hazard it and have it ready for you at the next meeting. How's that? You can see the same calculation for the highway department. Estimated use of fund balance at the end of this year of one point two eight eight million. And again, they, part of that was planned because of what was appropriated for the grant match, matches. Schools, you can see they're beginning fund balance. And their planned increase to fund balance of a little over a million dollars this year if revenues and expenses materialize as estimated. And then debt service fund. We started with nine point nine million in fund balance. You see the estimated revenues and expenses. We've got to true that up based on our final documentation from the closing. And we're projecting fund balance to be at around ten point six eight eight million. So we would grow fund balance there. Two things worth noting. Debt service fund is a result of the sales tax referenda. Debt service now gets a small piece of sales tax. And then the we did pay for some expenses rather than rolling them over into debt on this last borrowing. And the county commission adopted, or this body adopted and forwarded on to county commission a debt service policy for the debt service fund, and that policy is we want to try to attain one year's worth of debt service in fund balance. And we're not there yet, but we're moving in the right direction. I'll remind you that two years ago, we were using fund balance for two consecutive years. And we've stopped that.
That excess revenue is before the debt reservice financing.
I'm sorry, state that again.
The debt restructure that we just did will now come out of that, where it was not coming out, only the interest portion was coming out of that before out of debt service.
Yes, I made the decision to pay for any incremental costs associated with the financing rather than grossing up the revenue to cover the cost and try to eat those costs out of the current operating budget.
Out of the fifteen year, fourteen, fifteen year budget.
Yes.
Yep, okay, thank you.
Other questions on fund balance analysis? All right, something we all have to keep in mind is that under state law, there are, there's an issue called maintenance of effort, and in simple terms, very simple terms, it means that funding we get from the state is not to be used to reduce the funding contributions from local governments. So if I, if we were getting a hundred dollars, if we were putting a hundred dollars into something as Blount County, and we got ten dollars from the state, we, the new effort put into that, whatever it is we're funding, is a hundred and ten dollars, not ten dollars from the state and ninety dollars from the county. You cannot supplant local effort with state effort. It has to be an enhancement. So that's an oversimplification, but we have included information. We have a maintenance of effort requirement for education. We have a maintenance of effort obligation for the election commission. We have a maintenance of effort requirement for the highway department. And I might add, all of these are different. The means by which they're measured are different. The one that makes the most sense to me is the highway department. It seems to be the simplest. It's basically measuring your local revenues. And it's based on actuals. You have maintenance of effort requirement on the library. And then we have maintenance of effort on the sheriff's operations. So those are, you know, somebody might say, well, why don't we just go in and do X, Y, or Z? Well, you can do X, Y, or Z as long as it doesn't violate any of these five functions and reduces them to the point that you fail the maintenance of effort test. And the consequences vary and are different based on who they impact. It's not simple. Let me just say that. Questions or comments? On maintenance of effort?
Randy, it is kind of complicated to keep up with, but in fact, if you just look at the budgeting levels for the year previous, I mean, it kind of spells it out, doesn't it, for those areas?
Well, it's not always budgeted effort. It's, there has to be, I'll use highway as an example, it is, and you have to look at actuals in some of these instances. Let me see, I may have the highway department in here. This is just an illustration for the highway department. And this is what we did last year. The highway department is, you're measuring local revenue. And those would be payments in lieu of taxes, business tax, mental severance tax, local option sales tax, wheel tax, other local taxes and revenue. Well, if, if you look at a five-year window, which is what we have to measure there, they have an average, five-year average of three million, one hundred and one thousand dollars of local effort. And the question was asked earlier, how did we do on the test? Well, last year, for the current budget year we're in, they, the budget that was adopted met MOE by a thousand dollars. And you can see, you'll drop off two thousand nine, two thousand ten, when we do this calculation this fall. You drop two thousand nine and ten off, which is a two and a half million dollar year, and you're going to replace it with three point one. So the bar gets set higher. Any other questions or comments on that? This, to me, is the simplest one. The others are a little more complicated. All right, on the compensation and benefits side, the cost to implement Evergreen, as I stated earlier, is about one point nine million dollars. And that impacts only two funds. It impacts the general county fund, one oh one, and the library fund, one fifteen. And it's only the accounts one hundred and two hundred in number. And we have, we have included that in the recommendation in front of you, and it's itemized in that other column that I pointed out to you. So you can see by department the cost. And then we have one other issue, the last item on, last bullet here, which only happens every eleven years. And that is, there is an increase, there'll be twenty-seven pay periods that hit this fiscal year. And it impacts only non-exempt employees, so basically people subject to hourly wage rates. And we've estimated that cost this year of about a hundred grand. Every eleven years, it's a combination of you gain a day over that eleven years plus a leap year that falls in there. Just so happens, we've got two days, and we, our rough estimate is that's about a hundred thousand dollar cost to us projected for next year. It's never a big issue if you have a lot of turnover in your departments, but we have a lot of small departments that don't have much turnover. Questions or comments on that? The other bullet on there is on health insurance. We have assumed no rate changes, plan design changes as far as this budget is concerned. So based on the current rate structures that are in effect and based on the current plan designs that are in effect, we would need about three point one, based on the, and this is different from what I showed you when I met with you individually. The number at that time was about two point seven million dollars, I think. It's now three point one, based on the information that we got, that was shared at the HR committee the other day.
Randy, is that three point one in the, is that part of the six point eight difference, or where's this three point one?
It would be in addition, because the rates that are in the general fund are the current rates. And the current rates do not support the plan design that we have in effect right now and the utilization.
Nine point seven cents.
Oh, I got nine one three.
Other questions on comp and benefits? There are no raises for elected officials except for the judges, and that was adopted by the general assembly. Last year, I think they adopted a pay schedule for over a five-year period of time, if I remember correctly. It's three or five years. So the only compensation increases that you should see in the budget as they relate to Evergreen. I did put an article in here, or Angelique put an article in here about that one, one in eleven years where that payroll lottery comes up. And this is snapshot of the health fund that that kind of gives you the details to the three point one million dollars that I've just mentioned. We updated this based on the information that the broker shared with the HR committee. Self-insurance premiums, and again, we're somewhat limited in how we describe this stuff because of the state chart of accounts. But the first line, self-insurance premiums are basically the, on the individual side of things, that's basically premiums for an individual coverage. And that's the revenue coming into the health insurance fund. Somebody correct me if I misspeak. And then forty-three, ten, twenty, other employee benefits is the dependent. So that would be premiums that are paid on behalf of dependents, whether they come directly from the employee's contribution or the employer's contribution. Interest terms not even worth talking about. And then the retiree insurance payments, that's one that we changed based on the dependent coverage that we. coverage that we got from the school system. That's the predominant number there, or the largest portion of that. And then you see Cobra insurance payments for people that elect Cobra coverage after they sever employment with the county. So we're showing total resources of about $18.1 million into the health fund. And then you can see the expenses that are projected at the bottom. They total 21 point, almost 21.3 million. The first line is, let's see, is that our third-party administrator on? Third-party administrator, it's what we pay to manage the claims.
I can't see that part of your reinsurance.
Is that reinsurance, or is that the other one's reinsurance? I think the contracts with private agency is the clinic and our employee assistance. The fiscal agent charges are our third-party administrator, Humana. The first one is our employee insurance slash health. That is for our reinsurance for claims in excess of $150,000, is that right? And then medical claims are projected at 19.3 million next year. And just so you know, if we have a claim that's 200,000, reinsurance, we have a stop loss at 150, we still pay all the claim. And then we get a check or reimbursement at some point from our reinsurer. When we get that claim, that reinsurance payment, we reduce claims because it is a reduction of claims. We don't show it as a revenue. So that's why you'll see, though, you'll see, if you go online and look at the volatility, that's why you'll see some of the up and down.
Randy, on our Cobra, people who leave and elect to stay on, the price that they pay, how do they arrive at the market value? If it's low, someone could stay on on Cobra and have a claim of 125,000 that we would pay out. Are we in pretty good shape on the market value of the Cobra coverage?
Let Don answer that one, if you don't mind.
Obviously Cobra, we have, we're mandated by federal law to provide Cobra for people who are not employed by the county that were employed. It is set, we set it with the same rate, so we adjusted those about a year ago, trying to match them up to the, it's the county contribution, it's that total contribution. So it's at 9.75 for family, or the, I think 4.50 for the, they had to pay the full amount. Right? And we're seeing with the, with the voluntary exchanges, it's actually cheaper for people to go out and find that now that it's going Cobra. So that Cobra's going down.
Don, before you leave, we may as well, we may as well talk about the difference in the 3,169, kind of how we got there. I know the HR, you've talked about this in HR committee, and we need to probably talk about it here for those who haven't had the benefit of hearing that.
I apologize, I don't have my notes with me, but it goes back to, I believe it was in 13, when we recognized there was a problem with the fund. We were seeing more expenditures than funding coming in. The committee at that time, and the commission passed major changes, probably the biggest changes that we've seen to the fund. We thought that would take care of it. We got quarterly reports from our TPA at the time, from a consultant at the time, looked like everything was working well. Looked like we were coming breakeven for the 14-year. So that's why we didn't recommend in January a change of any rates. Around that time, we were made aware through accounting that the state budget said we were $1.4 million short. Took a while to find out what happened, where that error was, but that was on the reports that we were receiving from our consultant, that the formula was actually, the formula for the revenue was wrong, had a flaw in it. So they were overestimating our revenue. So that's where we got to the point that we are now. It's one of the reasons why we went out and got a new consultant and had them do an actuarial study. So we've really been bleeding since 14 on this account, and we thought everything was fine, which brings us to January, where our hands are kind of tied as far as how fast we can move to fix it because of, with the Affordable Care Act, we have to give a 60-day notice. We have, if we change any plan design or raise any rates on employees, we have to give a 60-day notice and go into open enrollment. Open enrollment itself is quite a process, logistically, to get started. So our hands are really tied. We can't move quickly, but while we're not moving quickly, we continue to bleed large sums of money from the account.
And that's about $255,000 a month or so that we're bleeding at this point?
Correct. That's according to the actuarial study from our consultant that he presented the other night. That's correct.
Thank you.
Then the last item on the expense side of our health fund is fines, assessments, and penalties, and that is our premium for the Affordable Care Act that we have to pay I can't add any more color than that. All I will say is, this is a law that has yet to have all the regulations written. And we were planning to pay this some two years ago, when Don and I went around and held employee meetings, because at the time, that's what we were told. Now, we're just now being invoiced for it and paying it now.
Is there any kind of appeal process on that, or?
No. No. Any other questions on the health fund? Again, none of this will change until the HR committee acts and gives us some direction, which I would hope for this body's work to be done would be done by the 11th, because that's when you're scheduled to vote on a recommendation to forward to commission. This is a snapshot of what the premium looks like and how it's distributed. Don alluded to some of the changes that the HR committee has adopted, and those would be, they instituted employee participation in the premium. You can see those amounts on the right-hand side. They also implemented and instituted a tiered premium structure, which just means we have four categories of premium. Employee, you have an employee plus child, plus spouse, and plus family. And then you can see the total premium cost on a monthly basis. And then each of these, the notes basically boil down to each of these constitute revenue streams over into the Fund 264, which is where we account for all of the health insurance Any questions on this?
That's a decision that you made by the HR.
And then here's the related information for retirees who are on insurance program, and you can see they have exactly the same structure. It's a tiered structure, and it's also the same contribution rates for the retiree. Taylor, if you would, you've gotten an additional handout, and I apologize, we don't have it for the screen, but we have aggregated the requests for capital. Taylor?
So yeah, in your handout, you should have an Excel spreadsheet that has four different sections. The first three are related to the sheriff, and the last one is related to schools. So the first section has 19,000 for the sheriff for computer software. Actually, can you go back in the presentation? You have a breakdown of it. Oh, yeah, way back, for the sheriffs. Yes. So for everyone, that's, most of the sheriff's capital are the first, it's the top one, and then the 181, and then the 120. And then there's a very, then the 12,000, the 11,848, the 10,552, and then the 5,950. You can tell me if I missed anything?
So the only items that are on this list that meet the definition of our capitalization policy are, sum up to which items?
So the 19,000, then anything above 10 grand.
Help me out, Randy. So 120,000 for body worn camera for patrolmen, 120,000 would be a capital item, could be a capital.
And this is only one year?
And then you also have the schools' capital plan, which goes for six years, or five years? And it's a separate spreadsheet?
This is, I believe, verbatim from the board. It's adopted by the school board and presented to county commission. I think some of the questions that were mentioned earlier about the schools and capital, they would be listed at the bottom of the spreadsheet. Taylor's identified their one-year recommendations for what they would propose to do in capital. Not five years, but one year. And that's $4 million for the audience benefit, $4,850,000 for next year's proposed capital budget for the school system.
Taylor, can you elaborate on the difference between the energy management systems and then any repairs and/or replacements for HVAC systems? How does energy management system differentiate between HVAC?
I'd ask Troy, if you want to come up and explain that one.
I'll be glad to speak to that on behalf of Gary Farmer. The chief differentiation you see there is the HVAC and mechanical equipment. That is plant and equipment that's installed for the purpose of heating, ventilation, and air conditioning. Energy management sits outside that, and that applies to lighting, sewer lift stations, any other consumer of energy in our school plant equipment. Did that satisfy your question?
Randy, I was wondering, I know they explained it once, but the new sheriff's office records and management software? Could someone refresh my memory a little bit more about the need for that, what that is?
Jared, would you like to do that, please?
Is Keith Hacken still here from earlier? Keith, would you mind addressing that again? I know you mentioned it, the committee prior to, I just want to give you the opportunity
What we talked about in the IT committee earlier was going back to what 911 has been doing the last few years. And they have a software product that has reached its end of life, with what that essentially means is, anything that happens to the software, they don't have, they no longer have support for that. So if they have problems with it, they're sort of on their own to fix problems. So they approached the company that they currently have to see about upgrading or getting a new product, because that was the recommendation that they gave, is, well, if you want anything from us, you have to have a new product, then we'll provide support for that. So when they looked at that, they realized the costs involved were pretty substantial, so they started looking at other vendors, not just with who they had, but sort of looking at the market to see what's available and what's out there. So at the time 911 was doing that, we got involved with the sheriff's office, Maribor, Alcoa cities, fire and police, and started looking at a solution that would work for everyone across the whole county, the whole public safety sector. And so that's where we're at, and sort of in a nutshell, is 911 has been looking and doing, having demonstrations and having vendors come in and look. We as law enforcement, the fire departments have been involved in that, too, in those demonstrations. And Spillman is where we've come to, at this point, to recommend, is, after looking at it as all the bodies, it's the one solution that we've all agreed on, that said this would meet our needs. And so in the past, we've not had a solution that would do everything for everybody. 911 has a product that they use. We as the sheriff's office and the city of Alcoa, Maribor, have a product that we use for records management. We use a product for jail management, and the fire departments had a product that didn't communicate with one another. And so what we're looking at with the Spillman product is a product that can be used across all agencies, allowing shared information in a real-time manner. But right now, some things we have are up to 24 hours old, as far as information that we get from 911. And we really don't have any communication as far as computer infrastructure within the cities and ourselves. So that's the idea, is we have a product that, call comes in at 911, they can do what they need to do, enter information, it's immediately available to patrol officers. Information that they do, whether it be an accident or an incident, that information becomes immediately available once they maybe take somebody to a jail, to the jail for an arrest. And it's really streamlining the process, because information is put in at every stage of that process, that we're, right now, we're not able to, we're duplicating it everywhere. And so we're hoping to streamline the process. It allows us, really for public safety, or for officer's safety and for public safety both, to share information immediately. If an accident or if an incident happens in, say, the city of Alcoa, and they enter information, and they're, our officers or the city of Maribor officers may have the opportunity to see the information within just a couple of minutes. When it's put in the system, it's available, however long it takes the officer maybe to enter that. So it's a system that gives us the ability to have one system across the county through public safety that we're all utilizing. Another thing I mentioned in the IT committee was, it gives us the ability to have access to information that we don't have from, say, the fire departments now, pre-plans, because the fire departments do a lot of work going around with businesses and have information, floor plans, schematics, things like that, that can help in situations for all of us. And we'll have access to those things in a car or in a mobile, on a mobile scene, we'll have access to that information, too. So it's something that can be utilized in our jail, it'll be utilized with the cities, the fire departments. jail, it'll be utilized with the cities, the fire departments, 911. And 911 is entering into an agreement that they're hoping to have, if my understanding is right, they're hoping to have by the end of this calendar year, they hope to have it in place for their 911 system, for their new CAD is the goal. And so, what we're looking to do is to get involved with that as well, the cities, and hopefully implement that over a period of maybe 18 months or something like that. It's kind of our timeframe to join with that as well.
Can you mention the progression that we usually have that we need to do more or what we need to operate and upgrade as well?
The, another situation that we're in that I mentioned in the IT committee is the lack of upgrading and the lack of change we've been able to implement with our technology over the last few years. We currently have computers in the sheriff's office that are about 12 years old that we use 24 hours a day. I mean, they, you know, we have software that's no longer supported. We use Windows XP on a lot of machines. It's been in place since 2002. And Windows stopped supporting that, or Microsoft did, I guess, over a year ago. And so, there are things that we can't do now because we don't have updates. It opens us up to some liabilities, some of the things you see all the time, security breaches, virus information, things like that. So, what we're hoping to do is to be able to improve our hardware infrastructure as well, computers, some devices that we'll need in the cars to be able to get to the level of hardware that we need to be able to run new software and the capabilities that we'll have from that. So, we'll also be able to add things like automated vehicle location that gives the ability to provide 911 to say an officer is located at this particular area. Or if we have an incident here, they can look at a map and say, well, this officer is closer, let's dispatch them instead of the officer that we know is maybe in this zone. It gives a visual representation. So, it helps with response times. It helps with officer's safety, knowing where an officer's at as well. And those are some of the things that we hopefully implement. That's not part of the Spillman upgrade, but those are things that need to be done to allow us to have the Spillman upgrade put in place.
I'm not an IT expert, but is it possible to incrementally upgrade? Or do you pretty much got to, it sounds like you're wanting to completely...
And that's the way we'd have to do it. We couldn't run, the way that, they can't run at the same time as far as being able, we could for a time period during a data transition or a data conversion, you can run something at the same time. But to really implement that, you sort of lose the ability to gain any efficiency if you're having to do things two times. If you're having to still do, working an old system here, but we also have the new system over here. So, it wouldn't benefit us really in any way to do that because there's no, there's no cost savings involved to do it over a period of time. There's actually a cost savings to go as one unit because there's infrastructure costs that are there that no matter what we do, if only the sheriff's office did it, there'd be some infrastructure costs that have to be put in place. Since 911 and the cities are involved in it, that, those costs can actually be distributed across multiple agencies. So, our costs would decrease if we all go at one time because some of those things can be split out. And then we're based, some of our costs are based on number of users. So, the cities have certain sworn levels. We have certain sworn levels as far as officers there. So, it really, it needs to be done as a one motion.
I don't know when this might happen, but one of the things I think would be, our capital needs are going to be like eating an elephant, and you can't eat it all. You've got to do it one bite at a time. At some point, it would, it might serve us well, and the public might start to see the benefits of it if we could start dedicating some portion of our budget specifically to capital, whether it's replacing, you know, a million dollars worth of roofs a year, or anything that would incrementally help us start eating away at some of the capital demands that we have. I'll just leave it at that for right now. I want to draw your attention to one last slide. And this, I think, goes to the question that was asked earlier. This slide basically aggregates all of the requests. Someone asked was the $3 million in healthcare included in the general fund. The answer to that was no. This is a by-fund, a snapshot of, in the far right-hand side, you'll see the notes, the general county budget. The amount that is requested is made up of two things, $6.8 million to balance the general fund, and there were almost $2.5 million worth of supplemental requests that were made. Then if you drop down to the school fund, the Board of Education's recommendation is to adopt a budget that would request an additional $1.7 million of resources. And we've said that that would necessitate a property tax increase because we don't have the ability to raise any other money. And then our debt service fund, we're looking at 1.7, almost 1.8 million dollars of funding that's necessary there to cover our debt service for next year. So, of the funds that this body oversees, we've got over $12.8 million worth of requests and funding shortfalls. Then you'll see in Fund 264, almost the middle of your page, far right-hand side, 3.169 million in funding or some changes in the healthcare funding formula that we're short right now based on current revenue, current premium structures and revenue sources. So, the total impact of shortages and requests for funding total up to $16 million.
So, Randy, as that equates to the property tax rate, that's an additional 50 cents. 50.47, give or take.
58. That's if you were to fund everything there. Another way of putting it is that would be the menu price. You may not be able to afford everything on the menu. Pardon me? No, but, I mean, again, we have limited sources of funding available to us, and we have postponed making decisions over time. And the longer you postpone decision-making, the more expensive it becomes.
And at least in several of these cases, we've talked about this from one year to the next. And as you said, we've delayed making decisions on several of these items. Probably in regards to the health insurance, we obviously did not see that coming, which equates to almost nine, close to 10 cents, I guess. So, that's, I guess, the only thing that would be helpful as we look at this is to be able to break each of these down to how that relates to the property tax, and then so we can see a total of what that actually looks like at the end.
That's a fair point, yes.
Just doing a rough calculation, we got 58 cents on an average person that has $150,000 house or property value. It's $870 increase per year based on that. Just to put it in perspective.
Right. But I think this body's charge is to establish those priorities that you believe merit funding and put a scenario together and value that. And that's what'll end up going to the commission. And I guess what I'd like to know is if you see anything that you have some sense that you would like to see the, I've shown you the full menu. I'd like some help now on how we can start aggregating some of those priorities to where I could bring something back to this body and say, is this something that is a starting point for additions or deletions to where you can form a recommendation on the 11th?
Obviously, debt service is not an option. There's six cents that has to be funded. Either way you look at it, if we're going to keep ensuring a credit rating.
I would agree with that, but I can't vote. I'm just, but I would agree with that assessment.
And I think in one of our earliest meetings, we said priorities have to be assigned, and Account 151 would have to be by definition the highest priority.
I think there's also no question that we have to address the health insurance fund for sure. It's just a matter of what that solution will look like and what recommendations that will come forth and how to handle that shortage.
Do you want to have any more questions or any discussion for Randy?
Next meeting is next Monday?
We have Sunshine Day meeting for next Monday. If this body feels you would, you want to still keep that. And our calendar says that you'll adopt a recommendation on the 11th, which is two weeks from today. Is everybody on board for the meeting next week?
Randy, would be out of order for you to bring us a pro forma with debt service, the Evergreen study, and the health insurance.
Sure, I can bring that.
Just to start. Am I out of line?
No. Nope.
Asking about the HR piece, though, before HR committee, as I heard the Director of General Services say, there's not a lot we can do in the next four months, five months to change the situation other than address it in funding.
And my two cents on that is the sooner the better. I would think we need to get more on a July timeframe instead of a January timeframe in that regard.
Yeah. And I think the issue on the funding side is that the county has to obviously fund the shortage sooner rather than later. The decision on how all that would be passed on could wait until some later date. But the fact that the county has to fund the shortage is not debatable and would have to be done. And then can be assessed after that as to how we restructure.
The only thing we're held to on that is federal mandates. We have it 60 days out from implementation. It has to be out 60 days before implementation.
And then Randy, I'm assuming that with Commission Roon's request, you'll have how that affects property tax on each of those items?
Yes.
Thank you.
Randy, I would, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I would, I would, I would be willing to support schools up to the 84 million line there. And it would be helpful. I think these others would probably cover what I'm looking at.
Okay.
The shaded items, my definition already, do we need to ask again for those to...
Not unless you all have changed your mind from my individual conversations with you. Any other discussion? Any questions? Anything? Anything else here? See nothing, I'll ask for a move to adjourn. Move to adjourn.